Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Nominations approved. We'll be voting on the appointments at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on May 7th. For the Civil Service Commission, I'd like to nominate or renominate, or nominate, Mr. David Cannon for reappointment, excuse me. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Nomination approved. For the Economic Development Corporation, I'd like to nominate Robert Schwartz to fill the position vacated by Mr. Kenneth Bloom, whom I'd like to thank for his service at this time. May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilwoman Campbell. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Nomination approved. I would like to make a motion to postpone the nomination process for the two available positions on the local development finance authority until the next regularly scheduled council meeting on May 7th, 2012.
You don't need to postpone it.
I don't need to postpone? Well, then it's postponed. Thank you. We'll now move to city council nominations.
All right. Madam Mayor, I will move the resolution resolved that Troy City Council hereby forwards the following nominated persons to serve on the Personnel Board. There are three terms available, all expiring on April 30th, 2015. And it's my understanding that one of the people that is currently holding the position has moved out of the area. Two people were not looking for reappointment, so I am forwarding the following three names: P. Terry Knight, Edna Abraham, and Lauren New.
Report.
Moved by Mayor Proton McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion? A vote, please. Oh, excuse me.
Is this appropriate? I'd like to forward Dan Brake's name also into the...
He was nominated for something else.
She nominated him for a position on the...
He could be on more than one, though. It's not in order.
Right.
What was your comment, Councilman Teetz?
Francis Jackwit, is that the person that moved out? I'm just trying to... You chose not to reappoint him? Is that my understanding?
I was informed that he's relocated.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilman?
Dan Brake has 40 years' experience in human resources with various Fortune 500 companies, including Kmart Corporation. I think he's a great fit here, and I've spoken with him about that appointment.
Okay. Is there a second? Now, city clerk, do we have the four nominations together?
Three nominations would be the original motion, and then Councilmember Henderson's nomination would be an amendment to Mayor Proton McGinnis's motion. So we need a second on that, and then we would vote on the amended motion, that all of those names be forwarded for...
All right. Do we have a second on Councilman Henderson's nomination of Dan Brake?
Yeah, I'll second. But I have another question.
Okay. Discussion?
It's not regarding that amendment, so I'll wait until after that amendment's finished.
All right, so we'll have a vote on the amendment.
On the amendment? Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
So the amendment passes?
Now there'd be a vote on having all four forwarded?
Four nominations forwarded.
I'm...
Councilman Teetz?
I'm fairly certain Francis Jackwit hasn't moved.
I think he sold his house. I don't know that he's actually moved, but I have heard that he sold his house.
Very good. Then he's moved. Fine. Didn't know.
Any more discussion? A vote, please.
Question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman.
So we had three openings, but we've had four people nominated. Now how do we deal with that in the next meeting?
So then, when it comes to the appointments, we'll do a roll call vote.
Roll call?
Or I'll call each council member. You give me the three names you'd want.
Okay.
Okay. A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Nominations approved.
At this time, that's the only one that I was forwarding nominations for. I'm still waiting to hear back from a couple of people that are on the other boards, so I'm going to wait until the next meeting to forward more nominations, as I'm sure everyone on council knows, but for members of the public, people that are serving in their capacity on each of these committees, where there will be appointments coming up in the future, they just continue to serve until they're replaced or reappointed, so they'll be able to continue to operate in the same way. I just wanted to make sure I heard back from anyone that was either interested or looking for a reappointment before I forwarded names.
All right. We have a request for a closed session. Could someone please move that resolution forward, please? Councilman Slater?
Be resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268 (H), MCL 15.243G, and MCL 15.268E pending litigation. Margaret Black v. City of Troy. Yes, no? Report.
Moved by Councilman Slater, supported by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. The closed session meeting will take place at the end of this agenda. That concludes our regular business. We now move to consent agenda items. Are there any consent agenda items that anyone would like to see removed for discussion?
Mayor?
Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to just pull J4A out for a conversation. I support that, but I just would like to have a little talk about that, if we could.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, seconded by Councilman Teetz, to remove item J4 for discussion.
It's actually to pass all of the consent items except for J4A.
To pass all of the consent? Well, that was moved by Henderson, then?
I'm assuming that's what he was...
I thought he was...
He just wants to pull it up.
That's what I thought. Okay, okay. So now we move the resolution, and you're going to...
I'll move it.
Okay.
If there are no other items, resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items of the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of item J4A, which shall be considered after the other consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll return to item J4A. Councilman Henderson?
J4A, and Mr. Zerlag answered some of the questions that I forwarded to him about this over the weekend. And I guess the questions I have, we have a printing project that's going out, has gone out to bid, and the company, I think it was in Flint or somewhere north of here, has gotten the contract to do this printing project. And, you know, I am a big supporter of trying to keep projects like this within the city of Troy, if possible. And to the explanation that Mr. Zerlag gave us, this is a kind of a larger scope project than probably some of the printing companies in Troy are capable of providing for us. But to further that entire discussion on, I just want a little bit of clarity on, you know, what our policy is. And he had mentioned that if a Troy business is within 5% of the bid, then we give them the opportunity to meet the price or whatnot. So if I could just get a little bit further explanation on, you know, how do city of Troy businesses, printing businesses, for example, get notified of this? Or do they have to proactively, you know, want Troy business to come in? Or do we have it published somewhere? It would be nice to have some clarity on that.
Manager Zerlag?
Thank you. Susan Leirstein is the expert on this matter, and I believe she's on her way in, but absent that, I'll try to give a little bit of... Come on in, Susan. That's twice tonight now. But I'd rather turn this over to Mrs. Leirstein, because she's responsible for all the bid specification developments and analysis of documents that lead to a bid award.
Thank you.
I can tell you that all of our bids are posted out on the Internet through the Mitten website. You've probably heard of it before. It's called the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network. And that is our official posting site for everything that we do out of the purchasing department. This particular bid, which was bid last year, was posted on that website. We get a number of hits every year for people who are registered as bidders for that particular commodity or service. So if a printer chooses to read the specifications and things like that, they can certainly then download that document, print it, and choose to bid whenever they choose. So there are... I think since 2003 is when we moved to that online system, and it's been very successful, actually. And pretty much anybody who does come in the office and wants to pick up a document, they certainly can. But we encourage all of our vendors to register on that website and get automatic notification for any commodity or service they're interested in bidding on for the city of Troy.
I agree with Councilman Henderson that it would be nice to have more city businesses or businesses located in the city of Troy, in a more general sense, not just the printing bid, but all bids. And I wonder, are there any, is there any weight given to the fact that a business pays taxes in the city of Troy?
Yes. Yes, there is. We do give that preference. At a time a bid is let, we do include that in our specifications, that if they are a local Troy business paying taxes in Troy, and they choose to bid on a project, they are given a 5% allowance. I mean, if they're the low bid, they're the low bid. There's nothing else to do. But if somebody else comes in lower than them, and it's within 5% of their bid, we do give them the opportunity to meet that low bidder. And I don't know that that's occurred specifically in the past, but it's a very fair process, and we really had no protests because of our practice so far.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming?
Just a follow-up question.
Sure.
I know we bid a lot of things, but how often do we actually get businesses in Troy that are bidding through the system? I'm wondering if some of them are just not aware. Maybe they should be taking advantage of this. Do we get Troy companies bidding very often on that system?
They do. We do get a lot of printers in Troy. There are a lot of printers in Troy. And so they do participate whenever they can. Printing, and I'm sure as you know, is very competitive. And there are companies that end up being out of state for a lot of our work and things like that. And it's just very difficult sometimes for some local companies to compete at that level, so... But we certainly give them every opportunity. If they call, we've always forwarded the information on how to register. We'll take the time to direct them on how to register, so we've been very successful with that. And we'll continue to do that. If you would like, I could certainly run a report off of that Mitten system that will tell you how many Troy businesses are registered on that site, so I can give you that information if you'd like.
Nice to have, I would think. Is that acceptable, manager?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're not just talking printers, though?
Right. This would be anybody.
Oh, that would be wonderful. I'd like to know that myself.
Okay.
But just for the record, there were people in Troy awarded business tonight.
Correct.
You know, some rather large sums, in this consent agenda.
Correct.
Mayor? My concern was not necessarily with this particular item. As I mentioned, I, you know, I'm going to be voting in favor of this. My question, I guess further to your explanation, on the Mitten website, is it expressed? So if I'm a Troy business, I go to the Mitten website, and I try to bid on a particular project, and I'm a Troy business, is there an explanation on the Mitten website about my ability to rebid if I'm within 5%?
It won't say that specifically on the website, because that website is actually used not only by Troy, but there's probably 100 other agencies in southeast Michigan that use the same website. So it's kind of, you know, generic as far as that goes. But we specifically tailor our bid solicitations for that.
Okay. And if I may...
So the bid specs indicate that, you know, if there's a bidder in Troy, and they read the specifications, which they'd have to, to submit a bid, they would, inherent in that bid, take a look at a narrative which says that if it's a Troy bidder, they get a, and they're within 5% of the low bid, they get an opportunity to match that low bid. It's not even a rebid. They just say, they would just tell Susan Leirstein that they wish to match that bid. Is that correct, Susan?
Yes. That's correct.
And one, my final follow-up question, I promise. Is there anything on a Troy website that might indicate to Troy businesses that they have that opportunity?
There isn't currently. It can be added. I can add it to my homepage if you'd like. That's something I can certainly add, if you'd like.
We'll be happy to make that happen. We'll add that to our homepage.
Mr. Darling, did you want to add something?
I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Zerlag said. Yes, you register with BidNet, you know, you provide a product or a service, any kind of bids that meet that specification, come in as an email, then you go into the service where they'd have the actual specs for that bid. In this case, it would have that information about a Troy business receiving that benefit.
Okay.
Thanks.
A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner. This, we're voting on J4A.
We need to move him a second.
Can we have someone move the resolution?
I'd like to move J4A as printed, or shall I read the whole?
There's a line.
That's good.
Is there a second? Report. Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Mayor Proton McGinnis. We've had a discussion. A vote, please.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. There are no memorandums or future council agenda items. There is a council referral, and it's acknowledgement of the fact that the Mayor for a Day Essay Contest that has been initiated with all elementary school-aged children living in the city of Troy is ceremonial and will not conflict with my duties as a presiding officer. This is an effort to increase awareness of the importance of citizen participation in our representative form of government. The details of the contest can be read on my personal website, janestroymayor.com. And if the council members would like to participate, I would ask that they would give me a call, please. We can move now to council comments.
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
As we all know, Mr. Zerlag has accepted an offer in another city and is resigning from his position here in Troy. I'll reserve my comments about how sad that makes me at a later time, John, but congratulations on that. But... So we need to do some things. And first of all, I'd like to propose a study session, because I think it's important to discuss an interim city manager. And I don't think we should discuss it at this table. I think we should discuss it in a study session. So I'd like to look for a date compatible with everybody to do that in the not-too-distant future. So if everybody could look at the calendar on our city schedule, we can do this a couple ways, I think, and maybe Mrs. Bittner can help me. But do we want this to be a separate meeting? Or do we want to attempt to piggyback this on another study session, which I think I would prefer not to do? But I'd like to hear some other discussion, if I could.
Councilman Fleming?
I'm glad you brought that up, Councilman Slater, because it was on my agenda to do that as well. And I concur, we need to do this as quickly as possible. But the next two meetings, Monday night meetings, are dedicated to the special budget sessions. And I think those are going to be full meetings. I agree. And we need to find another time. Even if it's a different night, other than Monday night, it's fine with me. But I think it would be very difficult to do a special budget study session and then do the due diligence on the... I agree. I was looking at possibly Tuesday next week?
24th.
If I could just throw that out there and see how that flies.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Is it something that we could do at our regularly scheduled time at 7:30?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I think we have to all look at our calendars.
Yeah, if everybody could do that. But I think we would need to make that announcement tonight, if we could.
Can we coordinate the details through the city attorney's office?
Mayor, yes, because it's not on the agenda, so you could waive your rules of procedure and do it that way. But, Mayor, you also have the ability to call a meeting, and a special meeting, and we certainly can work with you on that as well. I'm sure Mrs. Bittner would be happy to do that.
We can make sure that that happens, and this week we'll have a special meeting. Mrs. Bittner?
You can call the meeting, yes, Mayor. Or two council members can call a meeting, whichever.
Okay. Councilman Teetz?
I think the 24th makes sense for the reasons outlined, and I think we need to get our hands dirty and start working on this, so...
I need to check my calendar. I don't have it with me right now.
Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I do have a conflict on the 24th, but the 25th or 6th, either one is wide open for me.
Okay. We'll take a look, and it's going to be difficult, but we'll...
That's not working for somebody...
Me. Uh-oh. What, the 25th and 26th won't work? Can we decide this? Manager Zerlag?
Thank you. What you can do to expedite this matter is that, if you don't mind, give Beth Tasty a call tomorrow morning, and tell her what days you can make next week. And as soon as she receives seven hits on the same evening, she'll let the entire council know, and then the mayor can call me.
That sounds like a good plan.
Does that sound okay? Okay.
That's right. That sounds good.
Sounds good. Are there any... Oh, go ahead, Councilman Slater.
Just as possibly to prepare, and I'm certainly not, I don't want to initiate a discussion, but I would just maybe like to see some things done for that evening, if I could, through the manager's office. If you could, you know, we'll be looking at internally and internally, I'm sure, and externally, I mean. Could you get us a list of interim city managers off the MML site for us? And have a list of interim city managers off of their list? Is that possible?
Manager Zerlag?
Yes, it's possible. The league carries a list of, it's called interim city managers, it's on their website. And these are managers primarily that are retired in the area and don't wish to be a full-time city manager, but essentially would come into a community and take the role of a city manager on a limited basis, say, two to three months, whatever the council would decide, and then could also help coordinate the actual hiring, if the council wished, as well as working with any headhunter or executive search firm to find a permanent placement. Many cities do that.
I'm not saying that I'm proposing, but I think it would just be nice to have that for the meeting next week, if possible.
And, I'm sorry.
Councilman Teetz?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as you're collecting that, of course, be very interested what the associated cost would be, or how that person would be compensated and so forth, so...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I'd add one announcement, and then one comment about some of the reports that are included in our agenda. I was asked to publicly announce to everyone that on Saturday, April 21st, and Sunday, April 22nd, Barnes &amp; Noble booksellers on John R. across from Oakham Mall in Troy will be hosting the Troy Public Library Reading Celebration and Book Fair. This is a two-day event. It promises many exciting events that will be both fun for children and adults. For every sale that's made during the weekend at the Troy store with a special book fair voucher, Barnes &amp; Noble will contribute a percentage to the Troy Public Library. Vouchers are available on the library's website at troylibrary.info. Funds raised will go to purchase more eBooks for Troy residents, as they are in huge popular demand. So there's going to be a ton of stuff going on at the book fair, face painting, crafts, nook e-reader demonstrations for borrowing books from the library, and special author signings. So anyone that's interested in this event, obviously, purchases that are made, they would go for a very good cause. And you can get more information by contacting someone at 248-619-7577, or visit troylibrary.info. So that was my announcement. And then we had quite a few reports that were included, and some of them...
Excuse me? We have to finish council comments and then do reports?
Oh, I was just...
To keep the agenda moving forward?
Okay. I didn't know we necessarily went into reports one by one, so I was just going to bring up that I wanted to discuss it, but that's fine.
Well, it's a separate item, council comments and then reports. I'm just thinking if there's any other comments from other council members. I wanted to announce that a gentleman named Dan Girashewitz, many of you might know, he's won the bid for the National Youth Hockey Association Tournament to be held in the city of Troy in April of the year 2013. And this means that over 640 young hockey players and their friends and families are going to come into the city of Troy for a week long tournament. While they're competing in the fascinating sport that we know as hockey, there's going to be a preliminary meeting this coming Friday, April 20th, to begin strategizing on how we can best spotlight and promote the city of Troy to the best economic and media benefit possible. If you'd like to join us, please give me a call at 248-524-3500. If you'd like to join us, please give me a call at (248) 524-3500, option one. Leave your name and phone number, and I'll get back with you as soon as I can with more details. That would conclude council comments. Oh, Minister?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that Mark Miller has a long family history of hockey. In fact, his daughter has a scholarship for a bachelor's degree to play hockey, and he'll be the contact person to assist in this endeavor.
Excellent. Mr. Miller, can you make the Friday meeting?
Unfortunately, I can't.
Oh, darn.
Not this Friday.
Okay.
I apologize.
Thank you. It's at 4:30, in case anything changes with your schedule.
Well, unfortunately, I have some more pressing matters, family matters I have to attend to.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. Councilman Fleming?
Just to make sure that I'm not getting out of line on the agenda, can we talk about reports?
When we're finished with council comments, of course.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mayor Proton McInnes, did you want to start the reports section of the agenda?
Well, absolutely, and I note that most of those are on there, and sometimes we highlight some of them, and sometimes those are just reading materials for people that are covering items on the agenda, and we don't always go through each of them. But I thought, because there was some important information that was provided by the city manager's office regarding answers to questions that we've had about the budget as we're preparing to go into the budget process, I was wondering if the city manager would allow us to hear from some of the directors that prepared reports that were included. If you wanted to highlight that, obviously, if you could give us a brief overview as well. I just wanted to make sure, since it's in here, we could bring it up here. I think the whole point of going through some of these issues ahead of the budget sessions was to make sure that everyone had information, and that if there were additional questions or concerns that we would have, we could kind of get that out on the table now, so that everyone would be prepared to move forward with all of the information that they need at our two special budget meetings. So I thought we might as well bring it into the spotlight.
Manager Zulik?
Thank you. I can certainly respond if the council so wishes me to.
Would you sign?
All right, thank you. First, I want to thank all the members of council for taking time out of your schedules to spend with Tom Darling, Mark Miller, and myself to go over some budget issues that you had a concern with or wanted to be more up to speed on. I think it'll help us have a smoother budget session, so we're not mired in individual topics. And that said, I had given myself the assignment to talk about the general fund balance, and of course, it's not just me alone that does this. I have many staff members that assisted in this regard. They developed attachments for me, as well as edited my initial text. And I'd like to say immediately that it's a long report, and if I had, and I apologize for the length, if I had more time, it would have been shorter. But the fund balance is totally up to the governing body that's directed to me during the budget session, what levels you wish to use. I have to make a recommendation, and the purpose of this narrative, if you will, really has three major points. One is to educate council in terms of what is allowed and what's not allowed. The other is to inform the city council about what has gone on in the past and what could go on in the future. And then the other is just to make a recommendation. I think a manager and his staff need to make a recommendation to the governing body to consider. And so that said, I started out with actually defining what a general fund balance is. Went to see Tom Darling and said, "Tom, I'd like to know the simplest, most succinct definition of a fund balance." He said, "John, it's what's left over." So that was essentially the beginning of my letter. A fund balance is what's left over. Every year for the past 68 years, city councils have legislated general fund budgets for the city of Troy, and during the course of an audit, if revenues are higher than expenditures, the fund balance is added to. If the converse is true, then the fund balance is reduced. Most recently, we had to make use of fund balance to balance our budget. We're required by law to have revenues meet expenditures, and this year was no exception. However, because of the concessions made by our employees, primarily, and secondarily because of best practices, we took a budgeted use of a fund balance for this fiscal year that ends June 30th, 2012, and turned it into about a $1.9 million increase to the fund balance. And I want to thank all the employees for essentially making that happen. It was concessions across the board, every union group, every employee group, and I thank There's more than just a simple definition of fund balance in terms of what's left over. There's six different permutations. There's a budget stabilization fund that's utilized, and when I'm done talking, if you have any questions about that, Tom Darling would be happy to answer that. But if you take a look at page one, I talk about essentially adding $1.9 million to fund balance at June 30th, this end of the fiscal year. And because we have a three-year budget for fiscal year ending 6/30/13, we anticipate breaking even. Now, we're never going to break even, but it's going to be a minuscule amount in terms of revenues and expenditures. The year after that, we're projecting to utilize a fund balance of $1.1 million to match expenditures. And then fiscal year ending 6/30/15, we're estimating an additional $2 million out of fund balance to balance the budget. The good news is that we are having an increase in our residential properties, but the commercial industrial sectors are still declining, and we don't think that's going to actually be increased until sometime in fiscal year 15, some folks say fiscal year 16. In addition, I developed a table with the help, of course, of the finance department, and included the estimated on assigned fund balance that incorporates the budget stabilization fund. If you took that out, these numbers would be less, but we wanted to include everything, so we did. And then expressed that as a percentage of expenditures, so that at the end of 6/30/12, it's 32.6 percent, and then rashes down every year, so that the third year of the budget would be 21.9 percent. I then, on the second page, and again, I apologize for the lengthy explanation, but on the second page, I make a recommendation regarding the use of fund balance in future budgets, and my recommendation is don't. We're still not out of the woods at this point, because we are going to experience a declining revenue line in terms of our taxable value for the next several years. In addition, we're at the maximum of our millage levy. This council, like many other cities, does not have the ability to look at expenditures and a declining revenue line and indicate that you want to raise the millage if you ever mind to. You can't. And so that being the case, if we go through some rough spots, you're better off having a very healthy fund balance to smooth out a bumpy road in the future financially. A lot of cities have burned through a healthy fund balance in a relatively short timeframe. Sterling Heights, Southfield, Allen Park. I could go on and on with the list that have done that. In addition, Oakland County, which I think is a paragon of county management, they have a general fund balance of about 44 percent, and they're proud of that. Now, having made that recommendation not to use the fund balance, I also would like to make an exception to that recommendation. And that exception is that when we currently have a service delivery venue that is going to become unsustainable without an infusion of general fund monies, then I would recommend that the city council consider allocating some funding toward that venue. And the example that we have is the museum in Village Green. Lorraine Campbell and Ward Randall are here, John, too, I'm sorry, to answer any questions if you want to delve into that level at this point. They know more about their operations than I do, but I was advised that if there's not an increase in contribution for operation, then they would become unsustainable. I thought it was going to be a closure in July 1, 2012. There's a correction, and I apologize for that, that was put out today, which indicates that they would start the closure process in July of 2012. I also received a call today from Mr. Roger Kowalski from the Outdoor Education Society. I noticed, too, that John Reagan's in the audience, inquiring about my recommendation. And I did indicate that, again, this is the city council's decision, should they decide to fund something for the museum in Village Green, because Lorraine Campbell was hired initially, I think, as a naturalist, working for the Parks and Recreation Department, that some of her duties could assist the Outdoor Education Center. Again, this is all up to you, I'm just laying out a recommendation. Bottom line is that we've, at our high point, I think we are over $450,000 a year, Tom, for the museum that we used to budget. And we do have holding costs for the museum in Village Green. If they were to close, it would still have those museum costs, or the costs of maintaining buildings. And so the question becomes, since we're going to have holding costs regardless, do you want to expend more to have it be functional for our youth and residents to be educated in that process? Again, that's up to you. I have an attachment, which essentially is a letter from Lorraine Campbell, which delves further into that matter. And I forgot to mention, I also have an attachment, one from Tom Darling, that's about seven pages long, that further defines fund balance besides what's left over. That's contained in my letter. I think there's going to be a time, not in the near future, but soon enough, that we're going to have revenues be greater than expenditures. And at that time, I would suggest that the governing body start putting things back in the budget to once again make us a signature city with a very, you know, high level of service. We have a good level of service now, but it's not what it used to be. And the first thing I would put in the priority would be to increase the level of productivity for city staff. We've reduced our staff by about 35 percent from our high point, and we also initiated furlough time to lower the costs to the municipality. So in actuality, I have no full-time employees, if you define a full-time employee that works 40 hours a week for 50 weeks. And an inexpensive way to increase productivity is when you have an employee that's currently working to expunge those furlough times to let them work more hours, but that costs money, but not as much as it is hiring new people. Second thing I think you should look at at that point is to add more police officers to the budget to generate a deployment beyond 1978 levels. We're currently the safest city in the state of Michigan, over 75,000 population. I'm not saying that we're not going to be, because we've had a reduction in our deployment, but the number of police officers and the time that they have to be available for patrol, I think, is a contributing factor to that safest city designation. And then thirdly, is to increase capital spending. And I wanted to expound upon that further, and again, my comments are brief. Mark Miller, Steve Van Det, Bill Houdery in Engineering Department, they were very articulate in terms of our on-met needs. And our street network alone, as Mr. Fleming, the senior member on council, knows that we used to strive to have a good road system, and we have photographs that show what a good road system looks like. Now we strive for what's called a fair-to-good road system in our local street network. And the cost to bring us back to our old standard of fair-to-good is almost $60 million. We don't have that money. Additionally, it would cost about $370 million. Huge number. But if you take a look at all of our on-met needs that we have right now, not just in streets, but in water and sewer and storm drains and sidewalks, that's the number. There's an attachment to that effect as well. And again, we can talk about this at budget sessions, but if you have any comments, or if you're still unclear on something, I'll be happy to have staff go back and present something further. Also in our budget studies, or in our individual meetings, I'm sorry, the issue came up of keeping the library open for seven days. And I spoke at length with Kathy Russ, our excellent librarian, as well as Mark Miller and Tom Darling, who are also excellent, by the way. And there's a recommendation to not do this, primarily because it would cost about $1.4 million to get the library open seven days, and we still have a declining revenue line. Again, Kathy has a very detailed report, and I would prefer, if there's questions about that, to go to her directly, because she knows more about the issue than I do. But the issue also becomes one of quality versus quantity. Because our revenue line didn't decline as much as we thought it would, the .7 mils is going to be worth more, and so there's going to be more money to spend. We think that money should go toward library collection materials, because at one point, we budgeted... What was the number for library collection materials?
775,000.
Yeah, 775,000. And now I think we're at a number of about half a million. And so it would be good to increase the quality of our materials in a tighter time span. But again, that's just a recommendation. The final decision is yours, and I'll be happy to answer any questions from a, you know, person in charge of the organization perspective. But if you want any answer with specificity, I'd recommend that we engage the department heads that were very helpful in putting the attachments.
Councilman Fleming?
Yes. Talking some big numbers here. $59 million to get our streets from a fair to a good condition. In the past, we've been able to secure grants and so forth and matching funds, so you're not saying that we need to set aside that much money, but we need to have money that we can match with whatever other funds are available to help with these projects.
You know, I'm going to defer either to Mark, or Bill Houdery, or Steve Van Det, if they're in the audience, because I thought this was a general fund portion for the local street network, capital fund portion. But I'd rather have the expert answer that question, okay?
I was ready to answer. Let Steve.
You got the question, Steve?
Yes, I do. Good evening, Mayor and Council. What we're talking about here this evening, at least what's in the report in front of you, is local streets. And local streets don't get any matching funds, any federal funds of any kind, so it's all on us. And currently, we budget about $3.1 million annually for local street improvements in order to bring the entire system up to a good rating. It would be an additional $6.6 million per year, so up to about $10 million per year for the next five years is what we would need to bring everything up to a good condition. And that would be entirely city funds without any federal other funds of any kind.
Any other questions? Councilman Slater?
I don't really have a question. I have more of a, maybe a statement. I really look at this as a success story, this report, because some of the things that I know council set out to accomplish were accomplished. And now I think we can benefit with some of the success for that. And when I read this, I pretty much agreed with the recommendations. I was waiting to see the report on the library, quite frankly, to make a final decision there. And I think the report was pretty inclusive for me. I know when we voted to keep the library open on Saturday, that vote was six to one. And it was six to one to wait until the budget came about right now to see whether we wanted to keep that library open seven days a week. At least six members of this council made that decision. And I think we have the report, and I know the council before this, and I think Kathy Russ can correct me if I'm wrong, we did ask you to do a report on the functionality, the functionality report. I think I read that in your report, too. You're giving me confused looks. Not for today, but I think for the future.
Strategic planning?
That's it.
Yeah, yeah. I hope to be bringing that to council in a couple of weeks when you're done with budget.
Okay. And I really think, from my perspective, that that's the final piece that I need to make a decision on the library, to wait for that myself. But just from my perspective, and it's just me speaking, that I would be very troubled to just pick the library as the only part of the city and the only department in a city that doesn't get a cut. When we've cut every single other part of the city, why does the library get a free pass on this, especially when it's functioning very well right now, the way it is? I think it was a great decision to open the library on Saturday. I think your study shows that. And I think, you know, and I don't want to speak for the council, the other six members on this council that voted to open that library on Saturday, that that was the right thing to do. And now that we've seen the study, and now I'm going to wait for that other study, I think, at least from my perspective, that's where I want to go. And I thank you for that report. I thought it was very, very well-written.
Thanks.
And if I could just finish one other item, if I could. I really want to see the museum continue, from my perspective. And I've been thinking about what happened to the museum, and we lost a really good quality employee when we laid off Lorraine. And I think we need, because of what the employees gave back, that the reason, one of the reasons that that was done was to not lay off public safety, and we accomplished that. And if we can bring back some employees that were laid off, that would be great. So I personally think that we could kill a couple of birds with one stone and just bring... bring Lorraine back. And give her some other responsibilities that would maybe solve a couple of issues. So, I'll talk that more in, maybe in the budget sessions, but that's just my thoughts.
Are there any other comments? Councilman Teetz?
Speaking about the nature center and the museum, the nature center has also expressed a need for funding as well. I guess, you know, it's Pandora's box, I guess, since I'm getting a little concerned here, because, you know, what new entities will need money next?
Manager Zerlik?
Thank you. Candidly, I'm not clear on that. I was approached by Lorraine Campbell and Ward Randall that, and for reasons they can explain better than I, that the museum in Village Green was headed toward unsustainable. That's why I made the exception to my general recommendation of don't use a fund balance, please. I was not approached by the Outdoor Education Center.
And currently, it's budgeted for fifty thousand dollars to the museum, and that would increase to one twenty-five, if, is that correct?
No, that's incorrect.
Okay.
And it's seventy-five thousand dollars totally.
Totally.
And again, all mistakes are mine. When I wrote the cover letter, I thought that that fifty thousand was not in there. And so when council decides what to do, you can go anywhere from zero dollars, which means that you would take fifty thousand out a year, to seventy-five thousand dollars, which means you would add twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Sorry for that misunderstanding.
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you for the clarification. Also in the reports, there's a letter from Chief Gary, mayor, manager Zerlik, if you could ask Chief Mayor or one of his officers to let us know what electronic crimes investigations, network intrusion incidents, and computer forensic examinations means that relates to the U.S. Secret Service, I was quite curious about that.
I'll be happy to do that, but there was also a request, I think, to hear Nino's report on the assessing function that was attached to my report. It's, did you want to hear that as well, or do you want to just skip over that? It's up to the council.
I don't want to monopolize, but I would certainly like to hear from Mr. Lucari. He's waited here all night, and I think we should ask, I did have one question, but I know Councilman Fleming had a question first.
It can only be ten minutes longer than my response was on the general fund.
Boy, that's a tough call here, John, I'm fighting for my job. Mayor and council, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I should just state upfront that there is no formal quote from the county to take over services for the assessing department. There have been inquiries made at the county commission level. Mr. Dadd asked the equalization director and the deputy equalization director what the quote process would be. They basically gave him the same quote that they would have given Holly Township or anybody else in the county. I'm happy to say that we can beat that quote. I'm disappointed to say that that quote has no basis in reality. There's just no physical way for them to cover their labor costs alone with the quote that they've given, much less the fixed costs. I have spoken at length with the two heads of the equalization department. They promised with a quote of that size, they would supply two clerks and an appraiser full-time for the city of Troy. Their personal property chief said she would need three people to handle the personal property in Troy. There are people out there generally handle two thousand parcels per person, we have roughly six thousand parcels. So already they're at six people. I mean, you all know the numbers, you've seen them a hundred different times over the last five years, and put some over six hundred thousand dollars just in labor costs. The bid's at five fourteen. It seems pretty clear to me that within two years, and it's also, it's a two-year bid, it's a two-year rolling bid, every two years they come up with another quote. Seems pretty apparent to me that within two years, they're going to realize that they're several hundred thousand dollars short in covering the costs that it takes to assess Troy. I'd be lying if I didn't tell you, I mean, I love these people out there, I've known these people for thirty years, but I'd be lying if I didn't tell you I thought we were the best department in the whole county. We just flat-out are. No one does it as cheaply as us, no one does it as well as we do. And the reason for that was specific, and we did it on purpose. Fourteen years ago, when I became the assessor here, my deputy and I decided that things were changing in the business, so we cross-trained all of our people. All of our people do personal property, residential property, commercial industrial property, they handle all of their own appeals. The county doesn't work like that. They have separate people for residential, separate people for commercial and industrial, separate people for personal property. Those people out there doing the two thousand personal property accounts per year, that's all they handle. My three appraisers handled two thousand personal property accounts a year, all their residential, all their commercial industrial, all their own appeals. We're very lean, we're very mean. Three years ago, ICMA audited us, they said we were understaffed. We still lost two people. I lost twenty-five percent of my staff, I was understaffed when we started. We haven't dropped a single ball here. We're still doing our jobs, and we're doing them very well. ICMA study also said that it would take about fifteen thousand hours to handle a department of our size, they cut that down to thirteen thousand and something. Comparing it to the county quote, I was able to whittle down just on the audits that they would not perform another five or six hundred hours. It still takes six people to do that job, I have six and a half. We do a lot of auditing, we make a lot of money auditing in Troy. We do anywhere from two hundred to two hundred and fifty audits a year. We bring in two hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, another eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to other taxing authorities. The county's policy is two percent of the roll, that's it. They won't do more than a hundred and twenty audits here. I asked them to quote me on more than a hundred and twenty audits, they refused to do that. They do two percent, that's their policy. Huge loss in revenue there. That's the main reason we were able to beat the five hundred and fourteen thousand dollar quote. Does that change? Yeah, it does, year to year. I got to tell you, the last five years that are on there are some of the lower years we've had. We bring in more money than that in other years. So, the bottom line for us is that we beat a quote that we feel is unfair. We think we're your best department to have. And quite frankly, I'm convinced that there's no way they can do it for that much money, and in two years, you're going to get a heck of a change in value on that. And I should probably stop preaching and answer any questions you have.
Councilman Fleming?
Just to clarify.
Sure.
You started off by saying there was not a quote from the county? That was my question, did we actually get a formal quote?
There's not a formal quote, there's not a--
You referred to a quote.
Yeah, there's not a written quote. The quote that they gave me was verbal, the quote that the commissioner got was verbal, but it is the same quote that they give to other communities. It's basically fifteen dollars and something for real and twelve something for personal property. But again, we're not a six thousand parcel community, I have six thousand personal property accounts here.
Councilman Slater?
Does anybody else have any?
It just, I recognize where you're coming from, and it's, yeah, without having a real quote, I think we're just speculating. To me, unless we have a real quote, we can't have a real conversation. And so it would seem to me that that would make sense to go get a real quote, and, you know, let's compare apples to apples rather than speculate. And I think you bring up some good points, and I think that would be the direction we should go in. There's no harm in looking, so.
I can assure you that the quote will come in the same, it's just what they did.
Yeah. Then in that case, it'll, we can talk about the numbers then, but I think that's only fair to you and the work you've put in thus far, so.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Slater?
Well, the only thing that I have to say also in addition to that, and I know you do a great job, and you people do, is you have to be very careful when you get rid of something, okay? You can't just get rid of something, you got to look at it long-term, okay? There's a reason that we could do things with the building department, there were reasons that we could do things with the golf course. But when you do something in a year after you do it, and you find out, oh geez, we shouldn't have done that, you can't undo that, okay? You cannot get rid of the assessing department and then snap your fingers a year or two later and say, oh darn, we shouldn't have done that. Because you've lost Nino, you've lost his staff, you've lost everybody, you can't snap your fingers and bring them back. So, I agree, it wouldn't hurt to just satisfy everybody's, but believe me, even if it was a little over, it's not a good idea, in my opinion. But I don't think it would be, and I think you do a great job.
Thank you.
Manager Zerlik?
Thank you. We'll get a quote from the county. And just as an aside, I have instructed some staff members to also get a bid on supplying computers for the library. And we'll compare that to our in-house cost, I'm confident we'll prevail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nina.
And then we could have Chief Mayor give a presentation?
Oh.
Or his officer?
Good evening, Mayor. Questions regarding item NO. 8 on the city council report, the National Computer Forensic Institute?
Correct.
We received, this document is to detail how we received the computer from them, and we've gotten a lot of free training from them. It's a partnership that we do with the Department of Homeland Security, the Secret Service, the Alabama District Attorneys Association, and it's at a group called the National Computer Forensics Institute. What they do is they offer training for law enforcement, and it's funded through the Homeland Security Department of the United States Government. We sent one of our officers to that, a officer that's assigned to computer forensics. What that does is it allows us to respond to citizens of Troy, and let us be very responsive when it comes to computer crimes, or any crimes where computers may have been used to facilitate the crime, or records may be in there. So with this device that they gave us, it's a forensic recovery evidence device. It allows us to be able to get all that data back out of the computer with our specially trained officer. It came at no cost to us, it was through this grant funding, and the training itself came at no cost to the city of Troy. We think it's a good way to develop partnerships, and it's really good for our citizens. The only thing that could come up with us is the Secret Service may request that we assist them with an investigation. From their standpoint, it makes sense to get people throughout the country, because the nature of the Secret Service is throughout the country. So if they have something that occurs, say during the presidential campaign here, they have a local source to go to in addition to their people if they need some computer forensics work stuff. So that's a brief summary of it. It was, it's very good training for our officer, he really enjoyed it.
I was curious what network intrusion incidents refers to?
That would be as if somebody, say, got into a computer network from an outside source, like via the internet, was able to get into somebody's computer database and get information out that way, so they intrude upon the system. Our officer's trained to be able to go in and gather evidence on that from the computer if that was to occur. We could have that with people going into private businesses or some of our public entities, we can investigate that.
You see.
Is there any other questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, there are no study session items, so we now move into closed session. Thank you all for joining us this evening, and we look forward to seeing you again. This portion of the meeting is adjourned.